... meetings/ hearings started. My name is Colleen Connolly. I'm the Community Relations Coordinator for the Pennsylvania Department of Environment Protection, the regulatory state agency that's reviewing the permit for Williams Energy. We're here to talk about the permit, air quality permit, that Williams has applied for, for the central compressor station located in Brooklyn and Bridgewater Townships. Just to give you a brief overview, the compressor station is composed of three natural gas-fired compressor engines, one solar turbine, two dehydration units with reboiler, one dehydration unit with reboiler, a smaller one, a larger one I should say, emergency generator, and one enclosed, smokeless, non-assist flare, and three produced water storage tanks. And our staff will be able to fully explain that. I just want to give you a brief overview of what the compressor station is comprised of. The central compressor station is being built as part of the Williams Field Services Gathering System in Susquehanna County. It draws natural gas produced from area local wells. The water entrained in natural gas is removed before it's pressurized and moved to the Springville Line, which in turn delivers to the Transco Gas Pipeline, its regulated interstate transmission line, and from there the gas is moved to markets in the northeast, including New York and Pennsylvania. And again, we'll go further into that as the hearing progresses. Just want to take some time to let you know some ground rules tonight. This is how we're going to conduct the meeting as we have in the past. We're going to do the public meeting part of the evening, which is we take questions from the audience, and you can ask questions of Williams and DEP. And I'll introduce that staff in a minute. Then we'll take a short break so people can go get a drink and go out to their vehicles or just get up and stretch their legs. And then we'll go to the public hearing part of the meeting, whereas you offer testimony. Some ground rules that we do have during the meeting part where you ask questions, I ask that you limit it to one question and one follow-up. It's a light crowd, but we still want to keep things moving along, and they'll answer your questions as best as possible. Please refrain from yelling or talking out of place or speaking over someone else. We're here to try and answer some questions, and you'd like your answers. We'd like to get them to you. Please limit your questions to the topic at hand, which is the natural gas, excuse me, the air quality permit for the Williams Central Compressor Station here in Susquehanna County. That's the reason we're here. That's the only thing we can speak to this evening. And then during the testimony part of the evening, we'll have the same rules in effect. Please give that person time to speak. You'll get approximately five minutes to speak, and I'll give you a one-minute signal that it's time to wrap up. And again, please don't drown anyone out or speak over anyone. Just be courtesy. Extend the same courtesy you'd like if you were speaking. I'm going to be on the line right now and introduce people from Williams Energy. We have Alan Schroeder. He's a permit specialist with Williams. Mike Dickinson is the Operations Manager at Williams. And Don Ferdinand. Did I spell that right?
Fernall.
Fernall, thank you. He's the EHNS Supervisor for Williams Energy. For the Pennsylvania Department of Environment Protection, we have Mark Wakester. He's our Air Quality Program Manager. And we have Ray Kemba, our Permits Chief. We're going to get this meeting started right away. We have the building, excuse me, the auditorium until approximately 9:30 tonight. They're going to start shutting off the lights at about 10 o'clock. I don't anticipate us being here that late, but that's how long we have the building. But again, we'll try and move this along as quick as possible. Also, please, and I know nobody did it, please don't bring any signs into the building, okay? You can videotape. Yes?
When you say one question at a time, is that what you're...
Yeah, one question, one follow-up. At the same time. You can ask a question and then a follow-up, and I'll have you sit down. If we have time in that one hour that we're having the question answered, I'll go back to you.
Then we can go again?
Yeah, if we have enough time and everybody gets their questions in. Any questions? I mean, about the ground rules or anything. All right. We're going to start out. Williams is going to give us a brief overview of the project and what the central compressor station entails. Mike Dickinson, thank you.
Just real quick, before we get into the question-answer, appreciate everybody spending time and come out this evening, and appreciate your interest, but we wanted to just spend a little bit of time giving you a little bit of background about who Williams is, about what our central compressor station is all about, and hopefully with that background, kind of give us a frame reference as we answer the questions. Williams is an energy infrastructure company. It's been a business for about 100 years and currently very focused on the energy infrastructure business. We've been in operation in Pennsylvania in our company, which is called the Transco, since about 1950. So we've been around here for about 50 years. We've got operations primarily in the northeast, the Pacific Northwest, along Rocky Mountains, Gulf Coast, and then some operations in Canada. And we currently have three offices in northeastern Pennsylvania, employ about 70 people directly with the company. That's not counting contractors and subcontractors and whatnot. But we employ about 70 people, majority of whom are local folks from around the area. I think we're about 80% right now, Pennsylvania natives working for us. Just real quick, I'm sure a lot of you folks that have been following this have seen something like this, but just to help a little bit with what the, how the gas goes, how the gas flows from the wellhead to the end user. Basically, over here on the left-hand side of the diagram, somewhere someone drills a well, it could be onshore or offshore, wherever that is, at the location where the hydrocarbon is. So in Susquehanna County, we're drilling natural gas wells here locally. And you have to move the gas from that well, and so we'll have a piece of pipe that we would call gathering pipe that would bring the gas from that wellhead, just based on its own power there, to some location such as a compressor station. So that's sort of the role that our central compressor station would fill, sort of right here, like the gathering compressor station in the middle. And then as that compressor station compresses the gas, then it would move into more of a transportation line or perhaps even storage. It can go into storage locations. And then that transportation line moves the gas on to an end user somewhere in a home or a business or industry somewhere that would use the gas. Some of the sources of natural gas that it's used for, about 30% of natural gas is used for electrical power. You might say, "Well, we don't use much natural gas around here. We all use propane to heat our homes," or whatever, a lot in Susquehanna County. But you'd be surprised, actually, how much natural gas is used to generate electrical power. So those who use electricity, that's a common use around. A very small percentage of that is vehicle fuel, hopefully growing a little bit. That's one of the things that we like. 21% residential use, this would be for folks that do heat their homes with natural gas, such as in New York City or Philadelphia, or even in the Wyoming Valley down here, a lot of that. And a lot of industrial use, plastics and different things like that. Go ahead, Alan. So just sort of trivia question, natural gas. Can you guess which of these items here are made from natural gas? We've got diapers and bottles and adhesives and signs and lenses for microscopes and whatnot. And it's kind of a rhetorical question, but all of these things are made from natural gas or derivatives of natural gas. Ethane, propane, all of these things that come from natural gas are used for more than just heating. It's also a building block for many of the materials that we use in everyday life. So it's a very important role in everything that we do. So why do we need compressor stations? What's the purpose for us even having a compressor station here in Susquehanna County in the first place? Well, the primary purpose for a compressor station is just to compress or pressurize the natural gas so that it's at a high enough pressure that it can flow from wherever it is to wherever it needs to get to. That's the primary purpose for the compressor station. What we'll do is we'll have other purposes at that station to make sure that anything else that needs to be done, we'll do it at the same time when we build a facility. So some of those things might be removing water from the pipeline or from the gas. So we talked about having dehydration at this facility. That's removing some of the water that's saturated in the gas stream that comes out of the ground. We talked about having a filter to bring out any dust or any other particulates that might be in the gas that you can't move on down the line for that end user. And we also measure the flow there of natural gas at a station. We want to make sure we know how much is going through so people know how much was produced and how much was sold, things like that. So measurement is another key thing that we do at the compressor station. This is a map. Gives a little bit of context to kind of where we are from a geography standpoint. You see up there at the top of the map is the central compressor station. And then this blue pipeline that comes out to the south is what we call our central pipeline, moves from that compressor station to the south. And once it gets right there, there's sort of a transition where the line changes from blue to red. The red line is what we call our Springville Pipeline. And right there at that transition point, the gas that's been pressurized at the central compressor station can either go into the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Transmission Line at that point, or it can continue on the Springville Line and move south to the Transco Pipeline that's located down in Luzerne County there. You can see to that point. And again, the main purpose or the main thing that we're trying to do here is move the gas from Susquehanna County to one of these transmission lines, whether it be the Tennessee Gas Pipeline, what they call the 300 Line operated by El Paso, or the Transco Line, which is operated by Williams, which subsequently takes it to market points where it can be used as a fuel or an industry or whatever it might be. So items that are relevant for our permit application, we've got a handful of things to consider when we get into the permitting side of things. We have compressor engines. So these are the large natural gas-driven Caterpillar reciprocating engines that drive compressors. We also have, in this application, a compressor turbine. You heard Colleen reference a solar turbine or turban. These are high-speed machines similar to an airplane engine. It's a rotating item. It's a little bit different type of a driver that we use. Dehydrators are items that are relevant to the permit. The produced water tanks that she mentioned there. And basically, what happens with the produced water is when the gas comes out of the pipeline, comes out of the well and enters into the pipeline, as the temperature changes in the gas, it's no different than if you were to set a glass of iced tea out on your coffee room table. You get a little bit of moisture on the outside of that glass. That moisture is condensation, and that same phenomenon happens in the pipeline. You get a little bit of moisture from that saturated gas. It condenses on the inside of the pipeline, and over time, we get collections of water and we run pigs through the pipeline to push the water out. And as it comes into the station, we collect it in these tanks, and then it is hauled away for disposal. So those produced water tanks are items to consider. And then the enclosed flare that we discussed. And we'll talk about each one of these. This is a photograph of enclosed flare similar to one that we would be proposing to use. Basically, any of the manually operated vents or maintenance blowdowns from the compressors would be routed to this. And what this would do is basically combust or burn any of those vents to just help control the emissions on this site. There's no visible flame. It's what we call an enclosed flare. So the flame is inside of it, and it is odorless and smokeless. Compressor drivers. We talked about these a little bit earlier, but engines. What is an engine and what do we use it for? Basically, just a very large, almost like a train engine to a degree, right? A very large engine that's stationary, uses natural gas as its fuel. And why would you select an engine for use over something else? It handles a very wide variation in pressures, can handle variations in flows, so they're a little bit more flexible in what they can do, the operating ranges that they can operate in. They're more flexible and allows us more flexibility to meet changing market demand. So when you've got ups and downs, the reciprocating units are more flexible to handle those ups and downs. The other kinds of drivers we'd have would be a turbine. This is a photograph of a turbine. I've actually just recently installed in Wyoming County that are currently operating. And these items are actually more efficient when the pressures are steady and when you have a very constant or steady flow. Whenever your flow is stable and steady and your pressures are not cyclical, these drivers are more efficient and better to use for that big chunk. So they're good for large volumes of gas. And so a lot of times what you'll see folks do is you'll base-load a facility with a turbine, and then you'll use the reciprocating machines to handle the ups and downs on top of that. And that's kind of the way that we've got this station set up here. Engine and site controls, whether it's a reciprocating engine or a turbine, a rotating engine like the turbine, all of these compressors have what we call PLCs or Process Logic Controllers. These are devices that monitor all of the various process parameters of the device and ensure that it stays within its parameters, whether that's pressure, flow, make sure that it's a healthy unit. It also helps us to control emissions. These are monitored. All of the parameters are monitored 24/7 by the PLC. And then certain of those parameters that are key are actually spit out and monitored, you know, like pressure and flow and some of the more important process parameters are actually monitored by people 24/7 that are sitting behind the screen, watching it and seeing how it's doing. Some of the best available technology for turbines, this is what we'll be using to control emissions from the turbines. When you're dealing with a turbine-driven compressor, that technology NOx is your primary concern from an emission standpoint. Solar, which is one of the reasons we use the Solar brand, they have a proprietary technology called Solonox technology that does a very good job of regulating the NOx emissions from the unit. And so we use Solar and their Solonox technology to control that. For the other emissions like CO, VOC, and formaldehyde, turbines are very efficient at the way that they operate. And so those pollutants are adequate without additional controls. They're basically minimalist. For engines, again, similar issue with NOx, but for NOx on an engine, what we'll do is we include a lean fuel-combustion ratio. So the way that we combine the air and fuel is how we control NOx, and we use an air-fuel ratio controller to make sure that that stays where it needs to be. So some controls that are in place for that. And then on CO, VOC, and formaldehyde, it's a combination of fuel quality that we use. We use pipeline-quality fuel to burn in the engines. We have maintenance procedures where we do our routine maintenance to ensure the engines are maintained. And then finally, we have an oxidation catalyst there at the end that takes any of the emissions and goes ahead and finishes the oxidation of them and ensures that the emissions are within the range of the permit. This is a chart that shows the emissions for the onsite, emissions for all the engines. This is the engines as well as the turbine combined. I believe that I got that right, Alan? These are just the engines, not the turbine. Okay, so this is just the engines, not the turbine. And you can see with the catalyst is the red bar, and without the catalyst is the blue bar. You can see NOx is low anyway, kind of for the engines here. You can see that the catalyst has a dramatic effect on CO, VOC, and formaldehyde there. So the catalyst is the primary control for those emission levels. And then with the NOx on the turbine is the main consideration there. You can see the reduction that you get with the Solonox package that Solar puts together. And so this will be the level that we're controlling to there. And that's all from a presentation standpoint. I guess we'll take some questions.
Next, we're going to have a brief presentation from Mark Wakester, our Air Quality Control Program Manager. He's going to fill you in on some of the regulations and what's required in the permit of Williams. Thank you.
Yeah, we're in the process of public hearing. We have a draft plan approval that's been obviously drafted. Public hearing's the next step. We're going to take the public comments as we have in the past. Part of these will be reviewed. We'll have a comment and response document submitted out to anybody that wants to register here after the hearing closes 10 days from now. But all these comments will be addressed that are relevant to their quality permit. And then our next step would be the decision on issuing the permit to Williams. So we already evaluated best available technologies, some of the controls that have just been mentioned, and now we're here to take comments from the public. Not much more. I think we'll open up to the meeting and move on from there.
Okay, we're going to move on to the question part of the evening, continue with the public meeting. I ask that if you have a question, I'll call your name. Some of you that pre-registered or just signed up tonight, if you can come up to the microphones to one at the bottom of each aisle, just say and spell your name, and that's mostly for the stenographer's purpose because this meeting is being recorded. There'll be an official transcript, so, okay. Here we go. First person that would want to speak would be Craig Stephens.
Not here.
Not here. Okay. All right. Howard Hannum. This would be for questions only to Williams and DEP, and then one follow-up. Go ahead. Is that on, Howard?
Check one, two.
That's Howard? Okay.
Yes. We were told at the New Milford Open House by Matt Swift, Project Manager of Constitution, the site will be for four engines, Caterpillar engines. In Franklin, New York, at the open house, we were told by Matt Swift, five Caterpillar engines. Both times Charlie Brown, the FERC rep on hand, concurred with the answers. What is the accurate number? Thank you.
I'll be honest, I'm not...
Turn left. There you go. Right light. There you go.
All right. We're not real familiar with everything to do with Constitution. We're definitely here to answer any questions around the central compressor station. So I don't know if, is that a question about what's at this site?
How many engines are you permitting for on this site?
This site.
This, excuse me. This application has three engines and one turbine in it. We also have a 3516B, which would be used as an emergency generator backup.
So that would be four engines or three?
There'll be three engines to compress the gas, and one is an emergency backup generator and one turbine.
Follow-up? Okay. Can I pronounce this name? Mark Schmellering? Mark? You signed up previously? Sent an email? Want to come up? Mark? Okay.
Mark is maybe him over here. I think he's the one.
Mark, are you Mark?
I am Mark.
Schmellering? Okay, come on up, Mark. Right up to the podium, right up to the microphone.
Just a question.
You have a question and then a follow-up. No signs, Mark. So you want to put the sign down?
It's a photograph, and it's part of...
No photographs. No photographs. It's no photographs, Mark, okay? You can submit it later. Thank you. You can submit it later, Mark.
I want to submit something like that.
You could submit it later, Mark. These are the ground rules. Everyone's following the ground rules. That includes you. If you're not going to follow the ground rules, I'm going to ask you to sit down and leave. You've got to put the photo down, Mark, okay? You could submit it later afterwards, and I'm not going to let you move on.
These folks won't see the...
I'm not going to let you move on until you put the photo down. And Mark, you've been asked to put the photo down, and that's the rules. Everyone's following the rules. I'm not going to let you continue. Put the photo down. You can submit it at the end for hearing, okay? I think everyone got a look at it. You can put the photo down now and ask your question, please. Thank you very much.
You said no signs.
Okay, Vera, you're out of line, so you can go on over there, okay? Go ahead, Mark, ask your question.
I don't have a question.
Well, then if you want to offer testimony, that's in the second part of the meeting. If you have a testimony, you can have...
Okay.
Thank you. Sign gets put away, Mark. That's the rules. Those are the rules. Okay, next person we have who's signed up previously is Matt Walker. If you have a question, Matt?
Will Williams sign on to EPA's Natural Gas Star program via an official partner?
Can you repeat that one more time? Repeat that?
Would Williams sign on to be part of EPA's Natural Gas Star program and become an official partner of that program? It's a program that lays out some of the best available technologies and asks companies to voluntarily sign on to be part of that program.
We evaluated the program, and a lot of our practices are very consistent with the program, but right now we're not going to apply for it.
No. And my follow-up question is why? If you're already using the technologies, why not become an official partner?
Due to the additional time and effort and cost associated with participating in the program, we've just decided not to participate in it this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I now ask the people that signed up tonight. If your name's not on the list, that's okay, because when I get through this list, I'll ask you to come up and ask a question, and then we'll go back around. Kathy McNulty, you want to come up and ask a question?
I'm going to wait.
Okay, you can wait, absolutely. Albert from Sandy, New York. And Albert, your last name is spelled C-R-U-D?
C-R-U-D-O.
D-O? Okay.
My question is, is there any chance that this application's going to be denied?
Certainly, we haven't issued it yet. We're looking into the comments right now.
And those comments hold weight?
Certainly. We'll have a comment and response document addressing everyone.
Thank you. Vera Scroggins.
I'd like to know what pipelines are going into the central compressor station, the Williams Central Station? Is it just what you pointed out on the map, or is it also the Constitution Pipeline? Will that be hooked into the compressor station?
What pipelines would be?
Definitely initially, we've got a handful of pipelines that come from the wells on the gathering side. The discharge line initially will be, as demonstrated there on the map. I understand there is an application out for the Constitution Pipeline. Should that be approved, there is a likelihood that it would be an additional takeaway from this facility.
Thank you. Okay, if we remove on, sir, in the back, there's no signs allowed in the auditorium, so you want to take the sign outside into the hallway. That's the rule of the hearing, out in the hallway. Thank you. That's fine. People are going in the hallway. No signs are allowed in the auditorium. I think you know that from our last meeting. Okay. Christopher Acker, Bridgewater Township. Come on, sir, Chris? Go ask a question.
Could you tell us where the compressor station is located in relationship to population center? I'm not, sort of know where it is, but not quite sure.
The location DEP has is Brooklyn and Bridgewater Townships, straddling both. Go ahead.
It's approximately three to four miles southeast of Montrose. It's not close to any large population source.
Okay. Any follow-up questions, sir?
No.
Are you sure? Okay. David Plank from Franklin Township. David?
You pointed out that the gathering lines would be connected by this compressor to the Springville Line. Am I correct?
Via a line that we call the central line.
The central line is, but is only going to Springville. Is that the case?
The central line that runs south out of this location travels down to Springville Township where it connects to the Springville Line. At that point, the gas can either be delivered through Springville to Transco, or at that point, there's an interconnect with the Tennessee 300 Line.
But...
Okay, sir. One follow-up?
Yes.
Okay, well, that was your one follow-up.
That was a clarification.
Okay, go ahead. I'll let you ask this last one.
Is this bidirectional capability in this compressor station?
It's not necessarily bidirectional because you've got the, on the suction side of the station, you've got pipelines coming in from the field, from the wells. And so you'll have a suction side of the station from the field, from the wells, that will then be compressed and dehydrated. And then on the discharge side, it will go south on the central line toward the Springville Line.
Only south, is that correct?
That would definitely be the only takeaway initially.
Initially?
If other folks have projects that come, pick gas up on the discharge side of that, then we would definitely entertain that, 'cause more takeaways are advantageous.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. You can ask when I go around. Dr. Reverend Ellen Sokolow?
This is for the DEP reps?
Sure.
I'd like to know what the results are for where I can find the results of your public health impacts, your environmental impact studies, your noise level studies, your methodology for air quality monitoring, your economic impact studies, and what are you doing to concretely protect your employees who are mandated by their job from issuing violations to the gas and oil industries? I know that's...
Well, we're gonna talk about this central compressor station.
This is specifically related to that?
I can give you some contact information after this meeting portion.
Have those things been done?
We did some short-term studies up in Susquehanna County, Bradford County, and Washington County, down in the Pittsburgh area. We are doing a long-term health study down in the Washington area now that started in July, and I think it's gonna go till next July.
Whoa, long-term.
We are putting in some VOC monitors in Wyoming and Susquehanna County, starting in around January, for one year or more, each location, to do some studying. So, that's some of the stuff that's going on now. I can get you the results of the studies that have taken place here in Susquehanna, Bradford, and down in the Pittsburgh area. I can at least give you information, you know, to our website to get that.
Okay.
We also have our air quality monitoring stations, Wilkes-Barre and Scranton, other locations in the valley, where you can get online and see continuous data that's updated hourly. So you can see hour by hour all the data for NOx, SO2, volatile organic compounds particulate. I was on... So, I can give you some of the information later. Noise, we don't regulate noise, so that's something that the DEP doesn't really get involved in. It's more of our local municipality ordinance-type stuff.
Economic impact, we don't...
Yeah, economic, we don't get involved in, unless it's a major project based on emissions, then some of that gets involved. But these are all under thresholds that don't involve some of that.
Local Chamber of Commerce might be able to help you out with that.
Okay, so the last part of that question is, are you doing something to protect your employees from repercussions from the gas and oil industry when they file?
We get, we have our complaint line. We investigate. Our inspectors are out at these facilities frequently. If they find violations, we deal with it. We're not being told not to issue violations. So, I don't know how else to answer that. You know, we have ethics and things like that. We're professionals. If there's a violation, they're gonna address it. There's a chain of command. There's paperwork that's filled out on the sites. Obviously, a lot of people have been doing file reviews, write-to-no request, and all that's public information that they can see and find and look into. So, we're not being told not to issue violations. If we find them, NOVs will be issued.
So I have like six follow-up questions.
Okay, just wait a minute. Well, yes, one more follow-up question, and I'm gonna have to use a sit-down, 'cause I've got more people I have to...
The first follow-up question is, in the places that you have been doing monitoring and impact studies of the whole range, how close are these to existing compressor stations?
Well, when we did the Susquehanna study a couple of years ago, they were right at the sites of the drilling and the compressor stations. But like I said, that was short-term. That was several weeks. I forget exactly. Maybe it might've been six weeks or so, or less. But that was right at the site. We don't have nothing right now that's continuously monitoring. The closest is Scranton and the Wilkes-Barre area.
That'd be a good idea.
They're certainly looking into it. Like I said, the VOC monitors is the next step.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Black. Is Terry here? No? Okay. All righty. Is there anyone in the audience, before I go around a second time, that did not sign up and would like to come up and speak? Okay. And again, I forgot to remind you, but if you come up to the podium and just say your name for the stenographer. And I just wanna remind people, please don't talk over people when they're speaking. Thank you.
Can I sign up to testify also?
Sure. When we have a break, I'll sign up.
All right. And this is a question for Williams. At the open, a statement first and a question. At the open house, Matt Swift, who is a project manager for the Constitution Pipeline, did say that the Williams Central Station adjacent to the Newton Hill Cemetery is slated to be the beginning of the Constitution Pipeline. And I wanted to ask you, when you go to sign people up for right-of-ways, do you explain to them what a Class 1 area is and what an HCA is? A high-consequence area? And by virtue of signing up there in both of those categories? Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, hang on. Rebecca Rotor? R-O-T-O-R. Okay.
E-R.
E-R. Then, go ahead.
No, I think when we talk to folks about the right-of-way, they definitely have a lot of questions around pipeline safety, public safety, different things like that. We definitely don't hide any discussion around area class locations if that helps to describe how the pipeline is designed or what we intend to put in. We have those discussions. I don't know for a fact if the land agents have a script that they read through that specifically addresses that. But I do know that we do want to make an effort. We do attempt either through landowner meetings or right-of-way owner meetings to have those conversations to help them understand how we're gonna operate the line.
Well, just, could you please tell us what an HCA is and what the FERC guidelines are for Class 1?
You know, I do think that we're here talking about the air permit for the central air compressor station.
Answer.
And so, you know, this discussion around the Constitution Pipeline is...
Would you please answer my question? Or if you're gonna not answer it, a high-consequence area is determined by a formula industry has...
Okay, is that, are you have a question? Or you just... You can offer testimony. He's trying to answer your question.
So you're not gonna answer it?
He's offered you an answer.
Do you know what an HCA is?
I know what an HCA is. It's not relevant to this discussion tonight.
That's your answer? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else who wants to come up? Sir? In the back, and then, sir, you in the front. You could... Go ahead. In the back. Yeah, you first, and then the gentleman right in front of you. No, no, no. I think I called your name.
Him first?
You first, then him, then you, sir. Okay?
Okay. My name is William Houston. H-U-S-T-O-N. And my question, I didn't come with a prepared question, but one arose from what I heard today. So, given that earlier question, the response was that you had done kinda like some minimal studies. She gave a litany of studies. Economic study, you know, long-term, you know, socioeconomic studies. Apparently, there were some small studies that have been done. They didn't sound like they were comprehensive. And also, that there were some studies in progress. So given that, and given that there seems to be a lot of anecdotal evidence of serious, long-term environmental consequences due to these compressor stations, and also, health consequences. So, my question is, is it prudent to move forward with this process? This question is really for DEP. Is it prudent to move forward with this process, given that we don't have complete existing studies in place and lots of anecdotal evidence that there are a lot of harmful consequences? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, all I can say is, on the short-term studies, they found no evidence of any health effects that would be imminent in the area. We're verifying long-term, you know, to be certain with, you know, the public request. We look at every station separately. There's regulations that apply, best available technology. The facilities meet some of these requirements. We handle it that way.
The two existing problems that I would say there is lots of anecdotal and maybe even some scientific studies about. Number one is forced...
Okay, is there any question in there?
Yes.
For testimony? Okay.
Well, it's just a follow-up. I don't feel like I got a complete answer. I point to a health study that was recently came out of Texas that showed that cancer rates were down, except for one place. And it was the place where the compressor stations are. I believe it was the Dallas-Fort Worth area.
Right. I think the gas is a little different, or a lot different from what you're seeing in Texas compared to up here in the Northeast. A lot drier gas. But we have air toxic people, toxicologists in Harrisburg, that review a lot of this data and emissions. And so far, they don't see any indication that there is any health concern.
Okay, sir, you want to go? Just say and spell your name for a stenographer.
Leland Snyder.
Partisipant?
Leland Snyder.
Thanks, Leland.
Okay, my question is basically, and it directly relates to the compressor station. We know that the fracking fluid contains toluene, benzene, diesel fuel. All these have very low vapor pressures. Where, what is the life cycle of these? Exactly where are they exiting the system? Are they exiting at the condenser's tank, saline tank, at the actual drill site? Or is there a second conditioning at the compressor?
You're talking about the fracking fluid from the well pad? Let me answer that one first.
Yes, and also...
Well, let me answer the first part first. So we've not confused yours.
Well, no, I wanna follow-up, but I wanna have them make a statement if they're qualified to answer this question, and are they representative of the company?
And that's your follow-up? Okay.
No, it's not.
Yeah, those are two questions. Go ahead. You can answer the questions.
Shut up.
Go ahead.
Can you repeat the first question again?
Toluene, benzene, diesel fuel, all low vapor pressure. They're going in with the fracking fluids. What's the life cycle of these? Where are they exiting the system? Are they exiting at the well pad somewhere? Or are they exiting in a conditioning unit at the compressor? And are you qualified to answer this question?
As far as the air permit goes, we take gas samples of the gas that comes into our compressor station on an annual basis and analyze that through an extended gas analysis to determine the components of BTECs and other constituents. And we find very, very little of those components within our gas stream. In fact, I haven't seen any benzene within our gas samples taken to date. Where does it exit? I can't tell you what happens upstream from our compressor stations to the well pad.
Go ahead.
Okay. Second is, if I was, let's say, ten feet, let's say, who knows? 500 feet away from the compressor station, downwind. If I did a standard test, air test, for formaldehyde, exactly what concentration do you think I'd find in the air? And there are standard tests available to do this, usually available to farmers.
I'm not aware of any testing that has been done 500 feet downwind from any compressor stations. But it's a minor source permit. And when you get a major source permit, you do ambient air quality studies and modeling. Since it's a minor source, I would think there'd probably be very little formaldehyde, POCs, or any constituents in the air.
All right, thank you. Thank you, sir. Sir, right up here at the white...
My name is Eugene Marner. M-A-R-N-E-R. To confirm what Rebecca Rotor said earlier, Matt Swift, the program director for the Constitution Pipeline, told me at the open house in Franklin that this compressor station was the beginning of the Constitution Pipeline. If so, why isn't this compressor station part of the Constitution Pipeline proposal?
The central pipeline, or the central compressor station that the application is for is a compressor station that has merits with or without the Constitution Pipeline. It has been planned before the Constitution Pipeline. If the Constitution Pipeline never gets built, it'll be utilized for moving gas from Susquehanna County south to the Transco Pipeline and to the Tennessee Gas Pipeline. There are additional markets in New York to the north that I understand the folks from Constitution would like to be able to take gas from this point to the north. And so, I'm not 100% clear on all the details of their application, but I do understand they're wanting to pick up gas from the discharge side of this compressor station.
You say, "The folks from Constitution." Aren't you the folks from Constitution? You're Williams.
Ma'am.
I'm sorry. It's funny.
Well, you're interrupting, and it's rude.
Yeah, just to clarify, there are a couple of different business units within Williams. We're part of the Williams Midstream, which focuses on gathering and processing infrastructure. And so, the business that we focus on is gathering gas from the field and transporting it to transmission lines. The Williams Gas Pipeline Group that does transmission pipelines across the country are looking at a Constitution Pipeline to move gas out of this area into New York. As it sounds like most folks in this room are aware that that's under an application. We don't have a lot of familiarity with what's going on with that project.
I see. You don't speak to each other. That's interesting.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that did not get a chance to speak? Sir, did you speak?
No.
Okay. Okay, I think I called your name, though.
Ma'am, if you find a bevel locker...
Go ahead. Just say and spell your name for the... Now, I just want to point out...
If you find a bevel locker...
Hang on one second, okay. I just want to point out at six forty-seven, we're gonna move this along so we can start the testimony part of the hearing, so go ahead.
Why don't you just do a health impact? That's the problem. If you don't do the health impacts, they shouldn't be giving out any permits.
Is that a question? What's your question?
Right, that's for you guys. You should be giving out permits then.
What is your question, sir? Is your question, why don't we do a health impact?
If you didn't do a health impact, then you should be...
We're gonna answer that. We're gonna answer the question, sir.
Minor sources aren't required by law to do health impacts. We go by our monitoring stations, we go by best available technology, individual sources, not just compressor stations. Hundreds of permits that we issue in this region, not just compressor stations, but there's a lot of other plant foods that are issued for a vast majority of industry and none of them do health impacts based on their emissions. If they're a major source, then you get into that. If they're a major emitter of hazardous air pollutants, or if there's federal standards that require it, then we get into that. These require federal standards, but, you know, the hazardous air pollutants are at a level that don't require anything to that degree.
One more question, question.
That's because you guys are immuno...
Question, sir, you have a question?
Could you repeat that end of it? I couldn't...
Go ahead, Mark, repeat that. Will his, Mark, repeat the last part of that?
Yeah, I couldn't really. When you said it's not, it's not a federal guideline...
Right, no, there's federal regulations that compressor stations, other industry have to meet.
But not yours.
Our state standards don't apply. We, we go by federal standards when it comes to air toxics. And there's certain thresholds that they have to go over to be major, and then once they're over major, then there's something we look into. Compressor stations have minimal amounts of air toxics.
Okay, well, hang on. If you have a question, you can come up. You're eating into his time. Do you have another question?
So, then you don't make any health impacts?
Okay, it's a question, sir. It's gotta be a question. Okay. Ma'am, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was wondering what weren't...
Well, come on up to the microphone, and then ma'am, you'll be next, okay? Come up to the microphone, state your name. Just so we get people on record. Okay.
Hi, I'm Mark Marsh.
Hi.
M A R S H. You said a federal guideline, that the limit has not been reached on this compressor station at this point to make it a federal, require federal guidelines for pollution?
Become a major for hazardous air pollutants, right.
Okay, they're gonna add to this compressor station up to five. Will that change that status?
Certainly, we look at the cumulative total emissions from the facility. Yeah, so we will, if they reapply inadequate engines, then we'll look at the total emissions of all the engines.
So for every additional station they add, there's another evaluation?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, down here, you want to come up and ask a question? Just say and state your name for the stenographer, yes.
My name is Carol Marner, C A R O L E, M A R N E R. From what I've heard from many, many residents in this area, there does not seem to be a good system for immediate response to complaints about noise, smells, and traffic. Will there be in place, before any work begins on this compressor station, a duly constituted, uh, method of immediate response to complaints of this nature, no matter what time of day or night? Is there anything the DEP is planning to do that?
Right, yes, we have our emergency response program at the state. Our normal inspectors, you know, come out to complaints...
Immediately?
It depends on the severity.
Because if there's a smell...
No, just let him answer the question.
Okay, sorry.
It depends on the severity, health concern, things like that. If someone calls complaining that there's dust, we try to get somebody out there, obviously, as soon as possible, but it's...
I've heard that this rarely, rarely happens ever.
Okay, ma'am, a question, question?
Well, that is what I'm knowing. Are they going to put something in place, people on duty twenty-four hours a day, to respond to this kind of complaint with proper instrumentation to measure fumes and smells and noise?
If we find a persistent problem, then there's something we look into where we do bring out inspectors twenty-four hours over a period of time. But if there's no issue or persistent problem, then no, we'll come out with our guidelines that we have in place now.
Williams, you want to answer? Anybody from Williams want to answer? Can you add to that at all?
We definitely do a lot of work with the first responders in the area to make sure that they understand the risks that are around the facility. We do develop emergency response plans to deal with. How do we respond and behave and coordinate with first responders in the event of an emergency? Beyond that, there is just an ongoing effort to maintain communication and open dialogue with the community. We have, you know, office numbers, we have contact personnel that folks can call. And, and we do endeavor, you know, similar to the DEP, depending on the severity of the issue, we'll have an immediate response, or at least in the short term, endeavor to make a response, provided we know about it.
Well, I haven't heard of it yet. I hope you do.
Thank you. Anyone else, anyone else want to... Ma'am, go ahead. Stay up and say and spell your name.
Yeah, I have two questions. Iris Marie...
Okay.
Iris Marie Bloom, B L O O M. And I had two questions. One is about greenhouse gas emissions, and the question is to DEP, why hasn't DEP done its own analysis of greenhouse gas emissions? Williams has done an analysis, and DEP has put that forward as an adequate statement. So, is DEP gonna do its own analysis, and if not, why not?
Well, we do verify the emissions that they submit in the application. Greenhouse gas emissions have to be addressed now. So they do send us information, we verify it, and they do have to do emission inventory statements yearly. Show us where all the emissions are coming from, greenhouse gas would be one of those.
You, you verify it with your own study, or do you do your own modeling, or...
Just from the calculations, things like that.
So you don't do your own, so you don't do your own calculations? Or, or do you? It's a kind of a yes or no. Do you do your own calculations of greenhouse gas emissions?
Depends on where they're coming from, how our engineers are skilled to see if something looks out of line or out of place with the emission data.
Okay, so you examine their calculations. Okay, so you examine theirs. Okay. My, also about greenhouse gas emissions. DEP is using...
One last question, ma'am, we gotta move this along.
This is about greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, DEP is using the, the low figure, which is not used anymore, of twenty-one, that, uh, for methane. Methane is twenty-one times as potent as carbon dioxide. Uh, we're in serious climate change right now, and methane is a hundred and five times more potent than greenhouse, than carbon dioxide as a, as a greenhouse gas. On the twenty-year timeframe, and that's the number that's being used by the IPPC, even EPA uses seventy-two times. So why aren't you using a higher number that's more realistic, given the seriousness of the situation?
The latest meetings we had with EPA, twenty-one times for methane was the number that we were using.
That's not an answer.
I'm not saying EPA published twenty-one times...
That's, that's for the one hundred year timeframe.
He's giving you an answer, and you've had your second question.
Well, as we were told in trains, they use it twenty-one times for conversion to, you know, CO2 equivalents. So, if EPA changes the regulations or...
EPA is using seven, the, the low figure of seventy-two times for the twenty-year timeframe, which is the most critical timeframe.
Okay, ma'am, you've had your, your chance to. Thank you. Any, sir? Go ahead.
Brett Jennings with one T. I'm a counselor for Great Bend Borough. That's old English spelling. This is for Williams. With the incidences at compressing stations in the region, mainly the one that blew up down south of here that supposedly had, was reported in the paper. You had a failure of a lockout tagout system. And then the one up on Dunbar Road off the Laser Pipeline, that I haven't heard too much more of in the news. How are you gonna prevent this one from blowing up too? Because those are both new stations. And we don't have a foam truck like Vestal does that had to respond all the way out to Dunbar Road or down here in Springville from south of the county, south of us.
That's definitely a good question, the, the question that, that you point out at Dunbar. We had a lightning strike up there that started a little fire of that facility.
Yeah, I think your mic's off there.
Is that better?
Yep.
We had a lightning strike at Dunbar that set one of the vents on fire, and we had to let it burn out there. Didn't have any damage, but definitely a little bit of a show, but, and there was a response. And we did coordinate with the first responders there to, to move that away. We definitely learned a lot working with Susquehanna County through the, through the lightning incident. And just recently, about a week ago, we're privileged to help. I can't remember exactly which fire department it was, but we were able to help the purchase of a foam truck here locally in Susquehanna County that, that the intent would be, it would be available, should be called upon. Probably the primary thing that we would intend to do from an emergency management coordination standpoint would be to work with the first responders to make sure that we were all on the same page on what to do if there was an incident. It's never something that we want to have happen, but we definitely want to make sure that that's not the first time that we see each other is when we're out there, so we do that coordination. Beyond that, we continue to push hard to, to train our folks in following proper administrative controls. We continue to work hard to make sure that we're engineering potential problems out of the system and, and make our, make sure that our monitoring and our discipline is there so that, so that we keep incidents recurring, because that's really the, the primary goal. But that's, that, that would be the main thing. I think I've tried to hit a couple of the points there, but...
One more question.
Uh, would you require for even subcontractors that you'd have working on the site and the Williams personnel to have the supervisor have the OSHA thirty safety and the workers at minimum, the ten-hour OSHA course?
Absolutely. We, we require all of our contractors. We utilize a third-party site called the IAS Net World, and all of those contractors have to submit all of their safety programs, safety procedures, all of the things that they have to, that they are intended, that they must comply with in order to be a competent or a capable contractor. And then, you know, based on their compliance with that list of requirements, you know, we get a green light to use them. And so, so yes, we do require all of that.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else want to ask a question that hasn't, hasn't spoken yet? We're running out of time, so I'm gonna try and fit in as many back there.
My name's Tom Mullin, M U L L E N. I have a question for the DEP. I was wondering, the chemical composition of the emissions, could you explain how it's different at all from the airplanes overhead, or maybe the vehicles people drove here tonight? Is it the same stuff, or something totally different?
No, it's the same NOx emissions, products of incomplete combustion, so similar, yes.
Did you speak yet? Okay, I'm gonna let that lady go, and then sir, I'll let you go. Go ahead, ma'am. You want to come up here? Did you have a question back there, or sir? I'm sorry, sir, I just saw you back there.
I'm here.
Did it twice. It's Frank, right? Just say and spell your name.
Uh, Frank Finan, F I N A N. I have a, I have a very simple question about being a good neighbor. If, if I spoke in a normal voice conversation during this procedure here, I would not be a good neighbor. I'd be disturbing things. Yet, you're claiming that you're noise, assuming the noise doesn't hurt anybody. Is this going to be the same disciples as a, as a normal conversation? That's not being a good neighbor, that's kind of impolite and rude. Same with the odors that come out, pretending that...
Okay, sir, you have a question?
Yes.
This is the question part. Just a question, then you can have your testimony later.
Are you, do you still think of yourself as a good neighbor if you are not being polite?
The context, the context of how this applies to the natural gas compressor station?
It's, it's noisy, and they claim they're gonna be good neighbors. Good neighbors do not disturb their neighbors. Like, as if I was disturbing. I couldn't disturb you people by, by talking out here in normal conversation. They claim their noise is nothing more than normal conversation.
You have an answer?
Our aim is to be a good neighbor and work with area residents when we have a compressor station. Normal conversation is approximately sixty-five to seventy-five dB A. Our compressor station requirement in the ordinance is fifty dB A, and we won't meet the local ordinance requirements.
One more question, Frank.
Just follow up on that. So if we spoke with disciples you're talking about, would you consider us polite? Or would you throw us out if we spoke like that right now? Would you even try it?
He wouldn't throw you out, I would.
You would. Okay, the same with the odors. Assuming the odors are not...
Well, you had one question there.
Okay.
Odors, go ahead, odors.
Okay. I'm gonna get to a question somehow. If I farted here, I should leave.
Frank, thank you. Thank you very much. Sir?
Brian Muirhead.
Can you spell your last name, sir?
M U I R H E A D.
Thank you.
Uh, just trying to get an understanding of the, the emissions coming from the station. How would those emissions compare to, let's say, thirty or forty tractor trailers going down the highway?
I don't have the comparison. But there, obviously, there's emissions from tractor trailers, cars, lawnmowers, is there anything that burns the gas or hydrocarbon?
I was just wondering if it would be a lot more than the tractor trailers, or maybe less, or is it something comparable?
Well, the particulate emissions would be higher because they use diesel fuel in trucks. And diesel, diesel is a dirtier burning fuel, or natural gases that claim is burning fossil fuel that we have. In comparison, though, you know, I'd have to look at the horse, like Mark said, I'd have to look at the comparisons as far as horsepower and, and the fuel burning, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else who didn't get a chance to ask a question, I'm gonna... Ma'am? Okay, I have to wrap this up soon because we're cutting into our testimony time. Ma'am?
Susan McNamara.
Yeah. Might have time for one or two more, so I apologize if we can't get around to your second half. Go ahead, and just say and spell your name.
Um, I'm not, I guess the question would be for Williams.
Say and spell your name, please.
Oh, Susan McNamara, M C N A M, M A R A.
Okay, sir.
My question is, what's the difference between an FRP station and a compressor station?
An FRP station is really just, FRP is an acronym that was selected probably for convenience. It, it means a field receipt point. And this was a term that one of the groups that we recently merged with, sort of working with, if you might be familiar with Laser, had coined this term of field receipt point. And, um, they, they can be very similar. If there's compression at a field receipt point, then it would be a compressor station field receipt point. Laser was using that term FRP or field receipt point to identify a place where gas would come in from the field and be received into the system for transportation. So, conceptually, it's the same thing as a compressor station. They would all be different depending on what was there.
Ma'am, I'm, I'm sorry. Is this gentleman one? Sure, bring him down. I'll allow one more person after this gentleman, because we do have to move along. We can offer up your testimony. Right, we want to give a fifteen-minute break for people. I have almost seven fifteen.
Nobody's talking very loud here. I could barely hear you up there. I don't know if you can hear me now.
Yes, we can.
My name is Kim Loeburg. I, I've, I lived here for a while. Actually, I had a place for about eighteen years. My daughter is here now. I'm kind of curious. What guarantees, if any, can you guys provide that the pollution from the compressor stations will not sicken people? Will not make us ill? I can tell right now that there's a difference in the past several days. My tongue and my palate tell me immediately that there's a change. Now, that's poison, and don't try to tell me it isn't, because it is. So my question is, what guarantees can you give that your pollution won't sicken us?
Well, like I mentioned earlier, we have monitoring stations all across the state that monitor criteria pollutants, the NOx, the SOx. And there's sta, federal standards that are based on health studies. And our monitoring stations are looked at regularly, and they're all meeting these, well under the health-based standards, so...
Let him answer the question.
It's monitoring the air...
Okay, ma'am, ma'am, you had your chance to ask the question. You could offer up testimony. He's answering this gentleman's question, and I'm gonna ask you to leave. If you don't stop, he's answering the gentleman's question. If you don't like the answer, you can leave. Let him answer the question. You're only interrupting. You're not gonna get any further than this. Let him answer the question. Let him answer the question. I'm gonna ask you to leave, ma'am. Let him answer the question. Let him answer the question.
All these compressor stations are...
Ma'am, you're only interrupting. You're not helping the situation, and you're only eating up time and putting on a nice show for these people. Let him answer the question. He's ans, answering the question.
All these compressor stations are emitting pollutants, just like our cars that we drive, just like our furnaces, everything. It's cumulative, that's in the air. These monitoring stations monitor this air quality. And it shows that they're under the national ambient air quality standards.
Ma'am, no, you've had your chance to ask your question. Sir, do you have another question? Go ahead. Ma'am, you've answered, he's answered your question. You're out of line. You're not gonna get any further with me. One more question, ma'am. Sir?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir, I apologize.
I'm aware of where doctors are these days, especially now. In what way, if any, are local physicians and the local hospitals prepared to deal with people who may be suffering from air pollution poisoning? I can't tell, except my tongue and my ta, and my palate tell me that I'm breathing something in that's completely different.
Sir, you're gonna have to ask that question to the local hospitals. It would be just as generous of us to answer that question at this point. We're not medical.
In other words, it's up to the local...
Local doctors, hospitals, yes. I can give you a contact.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time. Ma'am, do you have a question? Because you're interrupting, and you're not helping the situation. Does anyone else? Do you have a follow-up? Okay, follow-up, go ahead.
I understand that there's at least seventeen compressor stations slated for our county, and there will be more. I'd like to know why we need so many compressor stations and why you even need all these pipelines like this Constitution Line, thirty inches wide, to go all the way from Brooklyn to Albany, New York? Why do we need all this? Thank you. That's from Williams.
I don't know that we necessarily can tonight prepare to speak of all the market dynamics to drive decisions for major infrastructure projects. But, you know, we definitely attempt to service our customers. They have a desire to, to move gas from Susquehanna County and to, to different markets. And so, to the extent there's demand there, and, and there's a market in New York that, that wants to consume that, you know, we're gonna do our best to provide infrastructure to meet any need.
At any cost. Sir, do you have a question? Want to come up to the... Matt, you have a follow-up question? Go ahead.
Yeah, from, from the air permit, I could tell there's about forty-one, forty-two tons per year of VOCs. Can you tell me what types and quantities of VOCs make up that number? Or, or an estimation of it, anyway?
Majority of the VOCs are formaldehyde and propane that you burn in your, your grill, butane that you see in lighters. There, there aren't really any heavy hydrocarbons out there. It's mainly propane, butane, and formaldehyde.
Formaldehyde's a byproduct of the engine combustion, so they come from the engines as they burn the methane gas.
My follow-up question is, do you know if formaldehyde causes cancer? I'll answer that. It does.
It depends on the concentration.
Hang on, hang on, let him answer. Go ahead, sir, go ahead. Hang on, hang on, let him answer, go ahead, sir, go ahead.
It depends on the concentration of the formaldehyde in the air and how it is received by the body.
Just a request for DEP to be less rude to the public.
Okay, thank you, you can sit down now, thank you. Okay, any other questions, any other follow-up questions that we have? Go ahead, ma'am, you have another follow-up question, then, ma'am, we'll take your follow-up. Getting into the closing time now. You wanna pull that microphone up? Sorry, thank you.
There's a produced water tank on the site that is part of this permit application. What's in that produced water and where is it going?
The produced water comes from the gas stream as gas enters the facility. We explained earlier in the process that water falls out in the pipeline because the pipeline is cooler, so you get condensation of the produced water. And the produced water is routed to onsite produced water tanks. In the produced water, there's a lot of brine in there, there's salt, there are some hydrocarbons that come from the interstate scrubbers within the facility, primarily lube oil. And that is disposed and reci, disposed and/or recycled at local facilities or transported across state lines to other facilities for injection or recycled for reuse fracking.
And can you guarantee that the trucks that are carrying produced water will have a placard saying how many gallons of brine and where it's, you know, how many gallons that truck is carrying and where it's going? Because we know the DEP does not require that. Will, will Williams actually track that so that the public can know where the brine is going?
We track that information as far as it being public information. We submit reports to the DEP as well. I'm not sure where this would relate to air quality permit though, where your question might be.
Okay, ma'am, you wanna go? And this is gonna be our last one, we're gonna call a 15-minute break.
And I didn't spell my name before, it's Dr. Reverend Ellen S.O.K.O.L.O.W. It's a bit of a spiritual question, knowing what all of you know about what your industry produces and the damaging effects. My question is, how do you live with yourselves when you know that you're perpetrating genocide for generations? And I'd like an answer from each person, please.
Start at the end, work your way down, just go for it.
If I shared that view, I wouldn't be in this business.
That's right. He's giving an answer, sir, please don't interrupt, let them answer the question.
I believe people living longer now than they have any time in, in history, as we know, as far as we know. Our modern conveniences give us a lot of luxury in lives. And our life today, as opposed to living several hundred years ago, with the toil that people worked at hundreds of years ago, is very difficult lifestyle. We have a very easy lifestyle now due to our modern conveniences, which include the use of natural gas in our daily lives, how we drove here today, how we have electricity, hospitals. I don't think, I don't believe your point of view.
Okay, hang on, sir, you're out of line. Don't speak. Go ahead, sir, go ahead, go ahead.
I believe we are providing, providing a resource that's important for our everyday lives.
At any cost.
Okay, sir, I'm gonna ask you to leave if you continue to interrupt. You're being rude, you're interrupting. Go ahead, answer the question, Mark. I, I don't believe DEP is perpetrating genocide. Any, any? Okay, Rebecca, no, no, no. Mark spoke.
I didn't answer.
The question is, how do you live with yourself knowing what you know?
We treat this like any other industry out there. Hospitals have boilers that emit NOx emissions.
He's answering the question, sorry, ma'am. He's not distracting from the question. He's answering your question, answer, he answered your question.
Anything that combusts or burns natural gas or through engines, boilers, is gonna have the same byproducts into the atmosphere.
So you're equating all of these compressor stations with a hospital? Is this a question? This is a question. And this is your last question. Are you equating all of the compressor stations with a hospital? Including the benefits? He's answering your question, ma'am.
I'm just comparing that there's emission sources throughout the whole region, throughout the whole state that we handle. NOx emissions from every industry, you can think of all organic compounds from every other industry. We have standards that we meet, federal standards require 1 gram per brake horsepower hour. Where the state requires them to get down to .5 grams, lower than what the federal requirements are. We're, we're doing our job, we're meeting them, making them, we do best available technology and that's what the rules and regulations demand and that's what we require.
Okay, Rebecca, do you have a question? Wait, now that's, we're done with the question. No, he didn't speak, no, he answered your question. Rebecca, you have a question? And that's enough, you've answered your question, you can sit down.
My question was for everybody to respond.
Your question's got answered.
Would you tell me, please?
Rebecca, go ahead. Last question of the evening.
As far as benzene goes and the gas that we have here, it's my understanding, having spoken to PhDs in geology, that the benzene is in the rock. So when you fracture the rock, the benzene comes up from the geological formations, it is there. So I, I'm very skeptical when you tell me that the gas that comes out of armor cells doesn't have any benzene, because that's not what I hear from PhD scientists. Having said that, I think that the VOC TPY tons per year for the permit for this compressor station all by itself, not aggregated, is 74.6 tons per year for VOCs. So if you're saying that that is not benzene, what is that? Toluene, ethylene, xylene, what other VOCs are they? That come up to 76 tons per year?
Yeah, I, I think the actual number is 42, the 76 may be prior to the control that we have put in place. But again, the primary VOCs we're seeing is butane, propane, and formaldehyde. And the numbers we see are PTE, potential to emit, so they're much higher than we'll probably see actually at the site.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the public meeting part of the evening of questions. We'll take a 15-minute break and then we'll listen to your testimony, thank you.